All right, good afternoon. I called to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, November 14th, 2018. Thank you all for coming. My first item of business is the approval of the minutes of August 8th, August 22nd, and September 12th. And we'll treat all these together. Robin has the notations of absences for people who need to abstain. So, any corrections or additions to these minutes?
So she knows which one I'm supposed to abstain?
Yes, yes, she'll make note of all that.
Okay.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Our first business item is Liberty University street namings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we have representatives from Liberty in the audience if there are any questions about the specifics of the names. But given the significant development on campus over the past six months to a year, the layout has changed significantly again, and they are proposing these street names to make a little bit more sense out of what's out there now. So, I have a map showing the current configuration, if anyone has questions. And we also have, like I said, Liberty here, if anyone has any specific questions.
Yeah, I think this was all pretty straightforward. Is there anything you want to add to it?
No, sir, I think just we have one road, the old University Boulevard is now a dead end due to construction and everything else, and probably be that way. And so, just getting University Boulevard named into what is now the new road and seeing a truly a circle road around the main campus so that it will stay walking, and just making sense of all the roads, so.
Great, all right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Oh, sorry, go ahead and state your name and if you have something.
Yes, I'm sorry. Richard Hinckley, I'm the Chief of Police at Liberty University.
Great, thank you. All right, and this is just informational only, so we can just move on to our public hearing.
Correct.
Thanks, Rachel. Next order of business is the following public hearing item. Petition of TPB Enterprises LLC to rezone approximately 10.76 acres located at 7814, 7816, 7822, 7900, 7902, 7906, 0812, 1620, and 8,000 Timberlake Road from B3 Community Business District, B3 Community Business District Conditional to B3C Community Business District Conditional and B5 General Business District to amend previously approved proffers and to allow the development of the property as retail, restaurant, mini warehousing, and car wash uses. And we are treating these as separate petitions, and we'll start with this one.
That's correct. Members of Planning Commission, this property was rezoned on July the 8th, 2014, to allow for commercial uses along Timberlake Road and the development of 270 apartments in the rear, and it was zoned B3 and R4 multifamily. The property is designated for high-density residential uses on the city's future land use map. The rezoning petitions today propose to amend the previously submitted proffers that came with that rezoning. The most notable changes in the residential portion of the development are the removal of proffers that related to the construction of a decorative screening wall along this area here, and that would be replaced with a vegetative evergreen buffer. Also, the proffers that would be removed include the construction of what was proposed at the time was a 15-foot electric vehicle path as long as chicanes along this private drive. Those chicanes were implemented to slow traffic when there was a connection proposed over to the Windsor Hills neighborhood. That connection is not going to be made, so the developer doesn't believe that those chicanes are necessary. The major change in the commercial development fronting Timberlake Road would be the addition of two uses that would require a B5 zoning, and those are these dark shaded uses here, one being a car wash and the other being many storage warehouses which would be totally within an enclosed building. An updated traffic study was submitted, and it was reviewed by the city's transportation engineer since the report went out. The traffic study indicated no significant changes to what was shown in the 2014 study. The main access to the development would be via a traffic signal across from Candlewood Court on Timberlake Drive, and the other entrances would be right in and right out. And the total number of units in the residential development would remain the same at 270 units. So essentially, what they're doing is amending the proffers to get rid of, to no longer have to do the decorative screening wall, the chicanes, and also allow the additional B5 uses. And the planning division does recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition?
I am.
Red pen, okay? Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I brought one in.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Beasley. I'm with Hurt &amp; Profit, and I'm working with the developer.
And while he's signing in, just a reminder to folks, we do have some guidelines limiting presentations, and you can find them in your agenda, and this is just to ensure everyone has ample opportunity to speak, so we ask that you follow them, and we've got a timer in front of you. Thanks.
Well, as usual, Tom and his staff summarize everything. It's all in front of you, so there's really not a lot more that I can add that you don't have in your packets, but I'll just go through a few things I wanted to highlight, one of which is, you know, both applications were heard before, and they were both approved. We are, the only differences really, and Tom went over this, were that we're requesting some B5 zoning for two parcels in the commercial area, and some changes in the residential area that are fairly minor, I guess. Just to highlight the commercial rezoning and plan changes, first of all, the development is about three acres smaller than the original development, and that is the removal of the two properties on the west side, which were the old Locoretta Building and the building west of that. So those no longer are in the development. And what was going there before was a grocery store, which was a pretty huge traffic generator, so that's gone. And then the climate-controlled storage building replaces Restaurant, which is that lower black shaded area, and the car wash that replaced a tire store. So, there's also less retail space than was originally proposed. The storage building and the car wash, of course, require the B5 uses. The proffers were essentially just simplified. There were a lot of proffers before that alluded to lighting and noise and stuff that the ordinance already covered, so we removed those proffers. And then traffic, although traffic patterns will be slightly different, the overall traffic in the development with the loss of that grocery store, somewhere in the neighborhood, 3,000 vehicles per day less than the original development, so pretty significant change. Excuse me. Highlighting the residential changes are basically what Tom said, removing the electric vehicle path which was proposed along the west side of the development, and that kind of went along with when we were connecting out to, or proposing a connection to Buckingham. So that was removed. The screen wall that was on the east side was also removed because essentially you had to cut down all the nice tall existing trees there to build a six-foot-high, or I forget, six or eight-foot-high fence, so it really didn't make much sense to do that, and so we're leaving the natural tree buffer there. And where the existing natural buffer isn't dense enough, then we will supplement that. So that's really essentially all I have. I'd be glad to answer any technical questions that you have, and with related to the development or traffic or anything like that. And the developer, Tom Bell, is here, and he would be glad to answer any questions you might have with respect to the specifics of the buildings and that kind of thing. He has met with folks in the community at the church there on the east side of the commercial area to just give them an idea of what was going on, and I wasn't in attendance, but it sounded like everything went well with that meeting. So, that's all I have, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Great, thank you. Maybe calling you back up later, appreciate it. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed who wishes to speak? State your name and sign in, please, sir.
Sure. My name is Albert Billingsley. I represent the Windsor Hills Neighborhood Association. Okay, my name is Albert Billingsley. My address is 1115 Morview Drive in Lynchburg, which is in Windsor Hills neighborhood. I'm president of the Windsor Hills Neighborhood Association, and you might wonder why there are a few people from the neighborhood here today, and that's a fairly easy question to answer of the petition before you today. In Bullet Point 3 states that this is for the addition of mini warehousing and car wash issues. This would be internal to the commercial, and it's hard to determine a scenario where this impacts the Windsor Hills Neighborhood Association or neighborhood. Of course, this hardly warrants a call to action. However, one item which is positive is the change of the Moody parcel to R1, which is a welcome change. The screening change may warrant some discussion at a later point. There are some items that need clarifying before determining if this is just a simple change, or whether it's a clarification opposition, or a line in the sand where the neighborhood mobilization for the city council meeting may be in order. And I'd like Jerry Swinton to expand on this on behalf of the Neighborhood Association.
Thank you. I'm Jerry Swinton at 1131 Morview Drive. Brief history on roads and how it affects Windsor Hills neighborhood. If I can have this, please, and you'll have a little boost. This will help the people in the back. As when Cornerstone was developed, an individual who I have tremendous respect for, Planning Commissioner Rick Barnes, in the minutes he stated in regards to our neighborhood that Commissioner Barnes said that he saw the connectivity as a safety issue. That was true then, and it is true now. So that is why anytime there is a whiff of connectivity, that brings out the need for clarification. Now, of course, you'll hear about connectivity, and the traffic engineer and city staff will have some great stats and so forth on the need for connectivity from a traffic perspective. But again, going back to Commissioner Barnes, it is a safety issue. I'm not going to take time to go through now through the uniqueness of our neighborhood. There are many instances where connectivity is warranted, but this is why we need to clarify some things. The first, in your packet, under the previous proffers for the property that was rezoned by council on July 8th, 2014, I'll read it, and I have copies for you in hard copy if you want those after I'm done speaking. Point number seven, agrees to vacate connectivity from Brunswick Road and vacate the street to the two abiding property owners. Now, this was passed by city council. From a legal perspective, this now is a street vacation and a property vacation in the hands of the owners. Where this comes into question is also in your packet, you'll see this, point number three from Hurt &amp; Profit. Number three, remove the project description for this project. Remove the proffer stating that the right-of-way at the western ends of Brunswick Drive would be vacated. That is not one of the current proffers. So now the question is, was that vacation done and over regardless of whatever happens to today, or is that back on the table? And that what is a key item that we want clarification on. It also comes down to, as Mr. Martin said, this is to amend, but yet I hear from an engineer who I have tremendous respect for, this almost seems like it's replacing. So we need clarification, so this way neighbors will have an idea of what is actually occurring. Going back to the beginning of this petition for today, you'll see under Bullet Point 3, it does say, "The current petitions would amend previously submitted proffers and allow the addition of mini warehousing and car wash uses." Maybe that's all it is, and if so, that's great. What a great day this is. We'll move on. You know how I like to save time. But maybe there is more here that we need clarification on. There is some parts about noise that was in there, that was other proffers previously. Again, it seems to be that those were gone, but those were designed to limit noise from commercial carrying over to very close residences. And quite frankly, I didn't have the time to go through and compare our current decibel ordinance compared to what was there previously. And also the building heights. Now with a new site plan, will the building heights actually be taller than what was agreed upon? Little history on this project, the previous developer spent tremendous amount of time with neighbors, spent a lot of time with me, Mr. Billingsley, to find out what concerns were, and to the best possible, not everything can be addressed, but really to the best possible, really try to reach accommodations. And given that buildings two and three are very close to single-family residential houses, there are specific proffers that addressed windows facing back of those residences. You picture the sightline looking down, the idea was to have it be where that would be removed, and the question is, is now that being removed from here as well? And the screening, I lost my inherent right of trespass one day, which was a great perk of being a planning commissioner, so I've not had a chance to walk the property line. But visually looking at it and pulling up an overhead map, it appears a lot of the vegetation is actually on the side of the homeowners, but I can't prove that without, again, walking. So while it's stated there's existing vegetation there, it may be existing vegetation that's already on the R1 homeowners. Therefore, that would require perhaps stricter screening on the side of the proposed development. And also, it says to plant, V being a stickler, should be to plant and maintain. One could plant a four-foot seedling, it's died, hey, they met the requirement, so that needs to be tightened up a little bit. Number one goes back to finding out in your discussions, does the vacation of that right-of-way still exist or not? Thank you.
Would someone else, anyone else opposed to this project like to speak?
This is not my family. My name is Sharon Twelfell, and I live at, right on Hunterdale Drive, which is a property that borders the Phase 3 of this development, okay? We visited this issue of the construction plan that was to take place sometime in 2015, and all were satisfied with the plans then. I do not feel that visiting this construction plan should change just because the previous builder went bankrupt and a new builder wants to change the things that were already discussed and voted on. If the buffer between the proposed property, building project, and our homes would change, keep in mind that the Lynchburg Planning Commission letter that was sent to the residents at Windsor Hill quoted-quote, "to all those within 200 feet of the proposed project," unquote. If they think 200 feet is where this project would affect our neighborhood, then obviously 75 to 100 feet would not be enough of a buffer, and that's why the planning wall. A disappointment to me was when the previous builder spent days with huge bobcats moving a ton or more dirt directly behind my house, no one else's. He said it was going to be used for future grading, while the dirt and the dust that was stirred up was awful. And keep in mind, it was put directly behind my house. It's got to be 20-some feet high. And I'm the only one on that street who has an in-ground pool, so you can imagine what the dirt was, let alone the eyesore of that huge mound that is still behind my house. At our last meeting with the previous developer regarding this project, I discussed with the council member and a member of the Planning Mission who was present at that meeting, that there was already a road available directly into the senior citizen Phase 3 area off of Buckingham Road. They saw that the current road that is already there would more than suffice for that area. Keep in mind that when Phase 3 is complete, that there will be another 50 to 100 cars coming through Windsor Hills with access to Buckingham Drive. As for the apartments through Windsor Hills with access, hang on, without access, there's already four easements, I think, that are going to go from the apartments on the Timberlake Road. Timberlake is a four-lane highway. Greenville Avenue is four lanes. 501 is four lanes, which would easy access to 460, Liberty, or any other area. With another access road to enter into Buckingham from the apartment complex, it would encourage another 400 to 500 cars into our small two-lane streets, and really used only as a cut-through to Leedsville Road into 460. Basically, it would be just that, a cut-through. We are a neighborhood. We are not a thoroughfare. Our residents, many of our elderly and handicapped, walk our streets where there are no sidewalks. It would be terrible to bring another 400-plus cars through our quiet streets, not to mention a major safety issue. Keep in mind that Phase 3 is going to bring cars through our neighborhood already. Please, I urge you, come sit at the corner of Dreaming Creek and Old Graves Mill anywhere between 4:00 and 5:30 today. The traffic now is a bit overwhelming. That corner is a high accident area. Having more cars use our small streets as a cut-through would be just disastrous. It is not that we are against progress, or change, or growth for our Lynchburg community. It is that we must include and continue to provide for the safety and needs of all our citizens, especially those who have been living in and supporting Lynchburg for so many years. Please, please, do not allow these easements or plans to change where they would further affect Windsor Hills, especially if it would make an impact on our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sharon Twelfell. I live at 111 Hunterdale. I'm not opposed to everything, I'm just opposed to the access. Thank you.
Anyone else opposed to this project who would like to speak? Yes, come on up, sign in, state your name, please.
I live on 123 Brunswick Drive, and I'm the pastor of Faith Alliance Church, which joins the property or the developing property. I have a few, I want to say first, I'm not opposing the development in whole, I'm just have a few questions that I think will change the quality of life that I live to be negative. First, from my own perspective, my house, there's a proposal to open, or maybe possible to open Brunswick Drive. Brunswick Drive, I don't know if you know this, but it's, you barely can park right there at the dead-end 2, if I park the cars on the road, that's how wide it is. And also, we did go through all of this problems with the city council a few years back with Mr. Tam, and we decided that they don't need it. And even I talked to the developer, and he said he doesn't need to open it. So I wonder what's going on, why, again, we try to discuss the sort of matter we already talked about. I mean, does city council want to change their position every week because somebody else comes along and says hello? It's frustrating. I thought the decision should be made for a while, right? That's my opinion. Second is, I have a question about the retaining wall from the church perspective. There's supposed to be a retaining wall, I think to the maximum, I don't even know, 18 feet high, I don't even know. And we at church have children and youth, and I just want to know what kind of wall is it? Will it be a challenge for the youth or children's retirement? Because that's a good challenge, but that can bring some risks for the children and the youth if they fall from the wall. Second about the wall is, the water drainage that is going to come off the wall as you build it, obviously you'd have to drain some water. Where is that going to go? I have no idea. Is it going to be our responsibility as church to start taking care of that water, or I don't know? Third is, all the water that is already existing there from our church property that is going to go against the wall, what are we going to do with that? Is there a plan to, I haven't seen anything to take care of that. The last question I have is about the wall that is already being approved for, with the city council between our properties and the development. There was supposed to be a wall. That maybe it was going to block all kinds of headlights, and it's going to maybe hide a little bit the apartment, and just give some privacy to everybody. And they talked about the height and everything, and it was, everything was approved. I don't understand why it's been canceled, because, and it's been proposed that they're going to do some trees and everything, but I don't know if you've seen those kind of trees that a developer or contractor does, they buy the minimum amount, the cheapest minimum, you know what I mean? They do the minimum just so it will look good on the paper, but they don't really care about the properties or the neighborhood, and that frustrates me a little bit. They're going to leave open space in between and put those trees that in 10 years, maybe they'll cover the view, and I just don't, I think that's not a good idea. So yes, I'm opposed to these things that I just said, and a few questions that I would like to know, if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me get back to you. Is there anyone else opposed? Just a reminder about the time limits for your discussion.
Hey, guys. First and foremost, I want to say I'm not really opposed to the development across the street. I'm not really speaking in opposition of it, but I am a business owner of, excuse me, a business directly across the street from this. I was never concerned about the apartments, or the condos, or residential coming in, but I had been in front of you guys before rezoning for my restaurants here locally. but I had been in front of you guys before rezoning for my restaurants here locally, and I know what my restaurants do to generate traffic. When I look at that plan, my concern is just for you guys to consider the restaurants or the businesses that are already in place right there, and adding more restaurants, gas stations and stuff in between Greenview and, um, and, uh, right there at the corner, I can't even think of the name of the road right there by, um, where Kroger is, Old Graves Mill right there. Between Old Graves Mill and Greenview is already very, very, very challenging to get in and out of. And when you think about taking the left out of those businesses directly across the street, it's gonna, it's already next to impossible. So if you talk about adding this commercialization across the front, I would just ask for you guys to consider the businesses that are already there across the street, 'cause it will affect those businesses. Uh, the Bojangles, the Wendy's, the Captain D's, the TGI Fridays, um, for people getting out, in and out of those existing, uh, businesses right there. And, um, and I actually am the one who owns the Bojangles directly across the street, so. And I love that it's being developed, but, um, putting that commercialization across the front is the only concern I've got, 'cause it is going to make it nearly impossible for people to come across Timberlake from my side of the road, uh, headed, say, towards town or towards Heritage High School. And it's gonna make a very congested area even much more congested. And I know, having been a part of these rezoning with my restaurants, that one restaurant right there that's proposed, right there on the right-hand side, will generate more traffic than all of those apartments combined it. I know that. That's all I really have to say.
And could you, uh, state your name too, please, sir, for the record?
Sure. My name is Ryan Lynch.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed who would like to speak? Mr. Beasley is petitioner. You are welcome to offer a rebuttal to any of this at this time, or, or we can, um, discuss things with questions after the public hearing.
Uh, I'll, I'll add a couple things.
Okay. Come on forward then, please.
I'm not sure if I, I jotted down things as people spoke, um, and I'll try to ju, address them one by one. Mr. Billingsley and, and, and Mr. Swinton, uh, had concerns about the vacation of the right-of-way on Brunswick, uh, which was proffered in the previous, with, with the previous developer, but is, but is now not being proffered. There's, I, I mean, the, the site plan, the, I mean, you're all, you're looking at, the site plan, the grading plan have not changed at all since the beginning of this project. There's, there are no plans to connect to Brunswick. In fact, with the, if you look at the grading plan, which we don't have in, in front of us, but there's a significant difference in elevation from the, the perimeter road on the apartment site to Brunswick Drive, that, I mean, I'm not saying it's impossible to connect, but it would be pretty, um, it, it would be pretty difficult to connect from Brunswick to, to that perimeter road. There really was no intention to provide a connection there. It's just that there's no, there's no need to vacate that right-of-way. It's, it's the city's right-of-way. There's no need to vacate it, um, as far as the developer is concerned, and I'll let him, you know, answer that if he wants to change that. I don't speak for him, so. The building heights, um, I presume that their concern is about the apartments. They're exactly the same footprint. They're exactly the same number of stories. I've got elevations which were submitted and put in your packets. I've got a, this is a relatively new rendering. I don't know if you want, uh, to see that, but that's, that's what the, essentially what the, um, apartments will look like. Very, um, very nice-looking, uh, construction materials. You can have that. The screening, I mean, the, the natural buffer that's there is, of course, there are trees on the residential side, of course, there are trees on the, um, proposed apartment You know, the developer couldn't go in there and obviously cut down the trees on the residential side, but I can guarantee you that if we went through there and cut all the trees on our side, it'd be a majority of those trees, they would be unhappy with the resulting natural buffer that's there, and less happy with a six-foot screed, screening wall. I would rather look at trees than a wall, but, um, I mean, that, and, and I, and again, I'm not speaking for the developer. If, if he wants to put that back in, he can, but I would, as, as an engineer, I would certainly think that a natural tree buffer would be, um, more appealing than a few scattered trees on the residential side with a screening wall. Miss Twinkle's concern, um, I, I'm, I guess I really don't need to address those because they all seem to be, um, in relation to the, the third phase of the development. I'm actually not familiar with what, um, what Mr. Bell plans at this point for that, that parcel across the creek. It does have connection directly to Brunswick, um, but there are no planned connections between the residential or the commercial area to Brunswick or Buckingham or any of those roads, so, uh, there would be, with this petition, these two rezoning applications in front of you, there's, there's, um, no additional traffic that would come through Brunswick or Buckingham from the result of these two developments. The pastor's concerns, uh, parking cars on the road, I'm not sure why that, um, that right-of-way is being used for parking cars. I'm not sure that I really can comment on that. But again, I, I will reiterate, there's no, there is no connection from the residential to, um, to Brunswick or Buckingham. The water runoff, um, we are meeting all of the local and state requirements in terms of, uh, management of stormwater runoff, both quantity and quality. We can't just let our stormwater run off of the property onto a neighbor's property in a concentrated fashion. If it was doing that before, it can still do that now, but, um, all of that site essentially is drained, um, internally and, and brought down to the creek where it's treated and managed, um, per state laws. As to the comment on putting cheap, minimum trees, I mean, I, we would be, if any trees that would be put up would meet the city's fairly aggressive landscape ordinance, so, um, that's all I can say on that. Mr. Lynch's concerns about traffic and businesses, I mean, he went through the same process on the other side. He didn't have to rezone, but, um, he brought in additional traffic to, um, Timberlake Road with the bu, building of his business, just as the people, you know, this property has a right to develop. So I don't really have a whole lot to add with that, but, uh, I don't know if you need to say anything, or?
He covered it.
Okay. And then I'll just leave it open for questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that's my thanks.
Yep.
Retaining wall, how, how is that?
The retaining wall?
Uh, which one? The one?
The one along the church. That was one of the comments he made.
I don't have in front of me. It seems like it was in the eight-to-ten-foot range, or somewhere around in there. I mean, uh, as you're familiar with the site, it drops off pretty quickly away from Timberlake Road.
I think he said eighteen feet.
That's right. That's what it says on the stick that is right there. I mean, I, as an engineer, will know if you make that.
He's talking about retaining wall around the car wash.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it would, it would start out, you know, pretty short, and then it gets taller as, as it slopes away, so. I, I don't have those plans in front of me, so I don't know. They could be eight-to-ten or twelve feet tall. Water is not running off of that wall onto their site. I think if, if you look at the contours, and, and I don't know if you can pull those up, but I believe it, it actually, that property runs pretty much, um, the runoff would go straight to the south, if not maybe towards the site.
All right, well, we can, we can return to that. We'll get through the, the rest of the public hearing. Mr. Billingsley is representative of a group. You do have the opportunity, and Mr. Swinton, to respond to that.
Yeah, the, one of the things that, that struck me right quick, like, was the, the engineer said there's no need or no reason to connect to Brunswick, but they still wanna remove the proffer. I said, well, if that's the case, why not just leave that proffer in? You know, that's, that really eliminates a lot of headache for, as far as the neighborhood is concerned. That's the biggest issue. Of course, there are a couple of other things going on, but by far and large, that is the biggest issue. If he would leave that proffer in to, um, you know, give up those rights, that would alleviate a lot of problems, and a lot of people would be a lot happier.
Uh, 'cause this is sort of deja vu all over again. I was on the commission when, and I remember you from previously, Mr. Billings, and you did a very nice job when you represented the group. And I think you were out of town, Mr. Swinton, when the issue came up. Uh, but refresh my memory, and maybe Mr. Martin would remember this better than I. I think the proffer came about, uh, by the developer in response to that issue of the connectivity, and I think it was done, I can't remember if it was done voluntarily at the planning commission hearing, or whether it, 'cause I think the planning commission recommended the, the, the plan without some proffers that then went on between the planning commission hearing and city council. So that, that proffer to vacate the street, uh, connection, came after the planning commission but before city council. Am I?
You are correct about a proffer. However, there was a different proffer, which was in, council, was out at council, now it's back in. And that is, uh, number three, a private road entrance shall be constructed from Timberlake Road to the multifamily residential development. This drive shall be open to the general public. I believe that was pulled out, so this way it kept it as private, and then this way, oh, by being open to residents and guests, that allowed, that reduced, pretty much eliminated that for the, for the connection. But do I still have my time as part of the, the group? Thank you. So as, uh, Mr. Billingsley said, hey, it's been added back in. So it was designed specifically to make it more ironclad. And I agree that Mr. Bell, when he was very gracious to come and, and speak at the church, which we greatly appreciate, and he mentioned the part about the car wash, which that's certainly there, front and center, the mini warehouse, front and center, uh, the removal of the wall, that's certainly in the petition. Uh, this was inadvertently omitted, but I do believe when he says he does not want to connect to Brunswick, that would be a tremendous cost on him. So I believe he's sincere when he wants to design it. He doesn't wanna have to pay the money to connect, and, and I, and I, and I believe that. However, that connection can still be maintained. All it takes is a grant or funding at some point in the future by the city or potential other owner of the property, uh, if he sells it, then at that point, the connection can be made. So the idea was, when all of the parts came, uh, with the previous petition, that was approved by council, that was the deal. Uh, Mr. Bell, very courageously, with a tremendous amount of capital risk, bought the property. I respect him for taking that huge risk, but it was bought with this condition in place. It was not bought on a contingency that if it, this doesn't go through, like other projects where it reverts back to the previous owner. So the deal was known in advance, and we believe that was the deal with the neighbors, and that should certainly be, um, maintained. And I'll certainly forward these on to you, and you can pass them down. One staple, and one is not.
Well, without repeating ancient history, I, I know, I guess we're, we're still on the question stage. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I guess I shouldn't.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get through the public hearing, and then we'll have the discussion, so. We will, we will address individuals' concerns as we go through the Q and A part of the discussion, but thank you for, both of you for following up. So at, at this point, the public hearing is closed, and I invite commissioners to, um, address questions to staff or to members of the public. And just, it sounds like we're gonna be discussing proffers a lot.
Just a reminder that we cannot request proffers. We can only express concern about lack of proffers, so.
I have a question. I'm just confused about Brunswick Avenue. I thought they, or street, whatever, drive. I thought that somebody said, Mr. Beasley, I believe, said Phase Three has no, well, is, is planned to, to connect to Brunswick Drive.
It only does.
To Brunswick Drive. But if there's such a steep hill there, how does it do it? By Buckingham. Okay. So it comes off of Buckingham, and then you can get to Brunswick Drive there, but it doesn't go up that hill, the steep hill that you're talking about, that Brunswick Drive would have. Okay. Well, that, that answers that question. But does that mean that, um, Phase One and Two, Phases One and Two are not connected to Phase Three?
That is correct, so.
They aren't, there's no way you can get there from there?
Building a bridge across this creek.
Okay.
Right. So this, this property here is what was referred to as Phase Three. This property is zoned R1. It is not part of any rezoning petitions today. Uh, if they were to come in and do anything other than single-family development, uh, they would have to come forward for rezonings. Uh, obviously, the access to that property is off of this street here, which I believe is at Brunswick.
Buckingham, that's Buckingham.
Buckingham, uh, here. Uh, the main concern is, and was, access here to Brunswick Drive.
Okay.
And then through this parcel that fronts onto Buckingham here. So, uh, as the petitioner has stated, they have no intent, uh, to access that from there. Um, actually, in full disclosure, uh, Ms. Moody, is it, that was her name? Right. She is actually agreeing to sell this parcel here, which is one-eleven, uh, but she is not selling one-oh-nine. So, uh, I think in order to address the concern, that the petitioner may want to just state that, uh, there will be no connections to any other public streets other than Timberlake Road. They can move forward with the vacation of this, um, and petition counsel for that. That's given, that, that's assuming that the property owners on both sides want to take it. So, so that's one issue. And if I'm, can I just continue on some of the other things?
Sure.
That might, might help you. So, in terms of the buffer requirements, if, if the wall is removed, the, the city zoning ordinance requires a twenty-foot buffer, staggered rows, ten foot on center, with a medium filler of shrubs. Uh, the height that planning is only four feet. Now, the landscaping ordinance does require maintenance of the, uh, the landscaping. So at any time, if, um, we get a call, or we go out and the trees have died. any time if we get a call or we go out and the trees have died, we can make them replant it. Obviously, it takes time for them to grow, but there are requirements in the ordinance for that. In terms of the heights of the, the residential apartments, when we rewrote the ordinance and it was adopted in 2016, we actually modeled our height requirements from this development and those proffers. So the, the ordinance requirements governing the height are the same thing in the ordinance today as what was required by these proffers and how far they're set back. The, the noise, the city has a noise ordinance, I can't tell you what the decibel levels are right now, we could, we could look it up, but also lighting, we didn't have a lighting ordinance at the time when this first came through, we now have the lighting ordinance to address that. So my, my recommendation to the commission is, it sounds like the biggest issue is the possibility of future connection to streets other than Timberlake Road, and you may want to seek some type of assurances on that. In terms of traffic, there would be a light here at Candlewood controlling access, these connections are right in, right out, I believe there's actually medians here, so they will not be able to make left-hand turns across Timberlake Road. Does that help?
But it's, it's still, I'm still confused, though, I think part of the question with the buffers, when they acquired this property, did they acquire all the existing proffers?
Yes, the proffers run with the land.
So.
Until they're amended by.
I guess one of the questions is, why are we even discussing the connectivity issue if that was one of the original proffers?
Because they're, they're seeking to amend the proffers for the things like the wall, the chicanes, other things. They showed on the plan that there was no connectivity, they just left that out. Now, it sounds like, even though they have no intent and it's not being shown on the site plan, the neighborhood would like to have assurances beyond the site plan and beyond their word that they're not going to make that connection. So they could put that proffer back in.
But, again, why is it, why is it removed if they acquired that proffer from the?
They're asking to remove it.
That's a question. So why would they want to remove this?
Yeah, okay.
Well, you'll, you'll have to ask him that.
And it's a different builder, correct?
It is a different, yeah.
I mean, he's, he's here, you can ask him.
I see, I see, but by not listing it, they're asking it to be removed?
Essentially, yes.
Yes, okay.
But if they were to connect that, would that not have to come before us? If they were to start building a connecting road?
I would, I would say yes, because it's not shown on the site plan.
That's what I was saying as well.
That it's being there, but it, again, the neighborhood, we, we did this discussion and we fought this fight four years ago, and it's not one that I'm willing to, to fight So, I mean, I think the important thing would just be to get clarification from the developer and seek whatever assurances that you need and the neighborhood needs to make sure that those connections won't be made. I would think, and this is, this is just me, the, the problem with saying, okay, we're going to vacate this, is one, again, you would have to make sure that these owners want to take it and then end up paying the additional taxes on it, and two, what has changed now from this, from the city attorney, is in vacating this, there's a lot of legal and title search that has to be done now to trace where this right-of-way actually came from years and years ago, to make sure that the, the actual title transfers to the right person. Because just because we vacate it, doesn't mean that half goes to this and half goes to that, right? If they vacated it, it could mean that if it came from this owner originally, it would all go to them. So I think a better proffer would be, we're not going to make connections to Buckingham or Brunswick or whatever. And I think that would be very easily talked to with the petitioner.
I think I was one of the more vocal people at the time, I think Mr. Martin and I respectfully disagreed on the connectivity issue, even though I'm in favor of him generally. In that particular instance, I was very concerned about the effect, potential effect on the neighborhood, and I'm back to the same, as I said, deja vu all over again. You know, I, I, without, and Mr. Martin's made complete sense as to why the vacation process would be cumbersome and costly and, and not, not as effect, not as efficient as a proffer from the developer that he will, you know, proffer that he will not move forward with any connectivity from the property to Brunswick. And if, if he were to so proffer that, and as, as Chairman Peralta stated, we cannot ask for a proffer, but if there was a proffer of that nature, I would vote in favor of the petition, but if it's not, I'm going to vote against it. And my suspicion is, knowing how Mr. Swinton and Mr. Billingsley mobilized the, the troops, so to speak, the homeowners back there, as they did the last time with city council, my suspicion is, the volume's going to get a lot higher between now and city council. But that's my, that's my position at this point, is.
I mean, it's, it's up to him. To me, honestly, the difference between a proffer, you know, and I, I'll let him make that decision, but we can proffer that, but we are, we also have to build this site in substantial compliance with the site plan. The site plan does not show a connection, so.
Yep.
The same thing, it's the, to me, the same thing, to have to come back before you and try to get a connection as it is to come back before you and try to remove a proffer, but.
I understand, but I, I think the homeowners back in there just want that absolute assurance and, and.
We're not going to connect to the. I mean, it's on the site plan.
If we can proffer it, let's.
Let's do it.
Cool?
Do it.
Yeah, I think.
It was never the intent to.
I understand, it's, it's not the intent, that's not their plan, it's not shown on the site plan. It sounds like the neighborhood would like the assurance of having it written out, so that there's no room for interpretation. I hope to retire one day. So, you know, put it, put it in writing, it sounds like Mr. Bell's willing to do that today, so if he would do that, that would make.
Yeah, that can certainly be done today and, and become part of the actual petition, which it, it sounds like everyone's on the same page, it's just a matter of putting it in writing. So we'll, we'll let you guys maybe hammer that out and we'll continue discussing other issues. I, I think we've kind of roundabout addressed most of the individual concerns that have been brought up. One issue with the, being adjacent to Timberlake, there is an existing stoplight.
It would have to be modified.
It would be modified, would there be crosswalks put in as a result?
Hmm, that's something I'd have to talk with the transportation engineer, there would be sidewalks across the frontage of this property on Timberlake. It, so you're.
My understanding was whenever there was, at least, I don't know what the threshold is, but when an intersection was redone, crosswalks are put in.
That's something I'll talk with the engineering division about, it, it would be beneficial, especially since the bus route is on the other side.
Yeah, no, that was mentioned, and there is no way to cross Timberlake right now.
Absolutely not.
So.
I missed that, what was this?
Discussing about the existing stoplight and the need to make that, if, if improvements are done, whether there would be crosswalks put in and just making the, the access back and forth across Timberlake safer? There, there would be, there is a, in fact, the city traffic engineer, just on his review of our signal plans that are in his office now for review, had requested a crosswalk on the, going across Timberlake on the east side of the road, not both sides. Which is normal, and that's, that's a big plus in my mind.
Would have pet heads on it, I guess?
I, I, every time I see this done, it seems to have all the bells and whistles.
Very good.
And so, and it's, that's a huge plus, I mean, right now, with heritage, the, the two intersections being done there, we are getting some crosswalks, but that's it, as far as I know, all the way to, into the county, so.
Yeah. So I think one of the other things that was mentioned was the height of the retaining wall, and actually, through the building code, depending on the height of that wall, there would have to be some type of fence or barrier to, barrier to keep people falling off of it.
Okay, right, which, so there's a safety thing built into it if, if, if it achieves a certain height. And then, did we get resolution on the screening versus leaving a natural vegetative buffer?
Oh, so, I'm, I'm sorry to keep butting in, but, so, actually, I believe, as this project evolved, the grading plans for it also evolved a little bit also, and when Mr., if I remember correctly, when Mr. Tam was doing this, the grading was going to go further, the elevations were going to be different right up against the property line. So the thought was to, since the grading is being pulled back off the line further, it would leave the existing trees and leave more room to plant other trees.
Okay.
That's my recollection.
So I guess, if, if you're telling me that there's going to be more of a slope going up for, for grading coming, looking up from the neighborhood, I already got trees there, some mature trees of some kind of type that then get filled in, is that, is that kind of the, is that kind of the way it lays out? I mean, that's kind of what you said, so it's not, you're not going to get a four-foot line of trees, you're going to get maybe some four-foot gaps in amongst what's currently, you know, what's currently there on that side.
Yeah, sort of, again, was writing something else, I didn't follow all of that discussion, but I think I heard Tom say that the, the apartments are sit a significant, low, significant amount lower than, than the.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at less grade, right? So, so I mean, I've got more of a slope coming, you know, looking the other way, coming from the apartments down, as opposed to being a hard, you know, a hard cliff, if you will. That's not what you do. So because of that slope, you've got some mature trees and some mature vegetation that's already there.
Right.
That you would then fill in, so it wouldn't be like everything there would be new, and we end up with a relatively, you know, what bothers me is a, as far as it can be, you know, a thin, brand-new growth. Now I've got some brand-new growth, but it's in amongst what's already there as far as mature growth.
Yeah, what, what we had said along, and you, it's written in there, is, you know, it, it's sort of, it doesn't make any sense to cut down all of those mature trees and plant a 20-foot buffer if you've got 60-foot trees there that are sitting there now, and we mentioned in that proffer, or I don't, in the site plan, that where there isn't a significant enough buffer, vegetative buffer, that, that a, a buffer would be provided that meets the landscape ordinance, which is the double, this double staggered row.
Which sounds reasonable.
Sounds like, again, similar to the retaining wall, the ordinance is going to address those concerns.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
My, my only other question, and it might just be a typo in the, the way we separated this petition in two separate parts, parcel 7906 is listed in both A and B.
Correct, there's a very tiny portion of 7906 that is in both.
Okay, so it is correct then?
Yes.
Thanks.
Now, again, the 109 Buckingham should not be included in the resolution.
Okay.
So essential, so just so planning commission and the neighborhood is clear on what that means, is basically all those proffers remain on that 109 Buckingham, which said it would only be used for single-family purposes. Now, if it was mine, at some point, I'd come in and ask to just have it rezoned back to R1, yet Ms. Moody was not willing to do that this morning, or?
Well, she, she said, she, she was a little, she didn't realize that it was still part of the rezoning, so I think she needed some time to think about what she.
Okay. But that property can only be used for single-family per the original proffer.
It's essentially an R1 in practice, just not in name.
Right. So he did submit this, which reads, "For Phase One Commercial or Phase Two Residential, no connections will be made to, to the local street system other than Timberlake Road, Thomas P. Bell."
So, Mr. Billingsley and Mr. Swinton, does that address your concerns?
The local street system certainly is rather all-encompassing.
Okay.
Yeah.
To your point, do we need to, I mean, do we need to revise the recommendation to take out 109?
Yes, when you get to that point, 109 should be removed.
Can you add that, Tom?
And, and it will be with this additional proffer.
Right.
Is what your motion would, would have.
For, and we're, for 3A, what, we're still voting separately on them?
Yeah, right now, the first motion is for the commercial.
Yes.
And then for number two, it would be striking 109 and adding this proffer.
Right. And, and, go ahead. And, and for the record, I was actually against this originally, but now that it's in existence, what we're doing is a much more subtle change, and I think it improves things, and so since it's there, I think we're, we're, we're making a better situation of what's there, so I'm in favor of what's being discussed with the additional comments. Any other thoughts or questions? Do we have a, a motion?
I'd like, if I knew how to make that.
I was feeling.
I would like to, do we have to do these separately?
We're, we're doing just, just the 3A with the, with the additional proffer added.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's looking at 3A, but it would actually be number six one in your report.
I'm looking at the agenda, sorry.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I would like to, and, and this is the one that has the proffer, the other one doesn't.
Yes.
Okay. I would like to move that we approve the, the petition as written with the addition of the proffer.
So you'd be doing number two?
Yeah.
You're moving number, okay, can I just read the?
That would be great.
Yes.
Okay. So the, if you want to handle them this way, the first one was the commercial piece against Timberlake Road.
Right.
So our recommended, recommended motion to you was based on the preceding findings of fact, the planning commission recommends to city council approval of the petition of TPB Enterprises LLC to rezone 7814, 7816, 7822, 7900, 7902, 7906, 7908, 7912, 7916, 7920, 8,000, Timberlake Road, from B3 Conditional Community Business District Conditional to B3 Conditional Community Business District Conditional and B5 General Business District Conditional, subject to the voluntarily submitted proffers. And those were the proffers that are shown in your report under Commercial Development B3 and B5C.
So that would be your, that would be Commissioner Marion's motion, which I'll, I'll second.
That comes next.
Yeah, that comes next.
That was already.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I oppose? All right, so we are recommending approval for number one.
Okay, so the second, which is the residential piece, is based on the preceding findings of fact, the planning commission recommends to city council approval of the petition of TPB. approval of the petition of TPB Enterprises LLC to rezone 7906, 7910, and 7824 Timberlake Road, 127 Brunswick Drive, and 111 Buckingham Drive from R4 Conditional, High Density Residential District Conditional to R4C High Density Residential District Conditional, subject to the voluntarily submitted proffers, which includes the proffers in your report under the residential section, and the additional proffer submitted by Mr. Bell that stated for Phase 1 Commercial or Phase 2 Residential, no connections will be made to the local street system other than Timberlake Road.
And just to clarify that, that no change is being done to the number of apartment units?
Correct, it was approved at 270 units.
Yep.
They are proposing 270 units.
And, and to clarify, you read it including 109?
Oh, I saw.
Okay, good, that's what I wanted to make sure, so, so I think we've got everything covered. All right. All in favor? Aye, opposed? All right, thank you all very much, we are recommending approval to city council.
You know, when I saw this petition come in, I said, here we go all over again. And I said, the usual suspects are going to show up from Windsor Hills. Mr. Bell was not part of that first process with Mr. Tam, but, you know, Mr. Tam was a very genial fellow. I'm very sorry that things didn't work out for him, but somebody said earlier they were happy that, that Mr. Bell, who's one of the most prominent and well-regarded developers in this area, came in here, and, you know, what a joy, really, to see the four of you all get this worked out. I, I know I feel a lot better about it, from our perspective, and I, I can assure you that city council will feel better about this process than they would have, no matter how, how the result would have turned out, than they would have had, had we not done really what we're here to do, which is to flesh a lot of these things out before they get to city council. So, thank the four of you all and the other residents of Windsor Hills for coming and, and working in a very amicable fashion, I think, to a win-win result.
Council, appreciate having you.
Yes.
Yes. Yep. All right, thank you all very much, and we are going to continue, we'll wait a moment. All right, thank you. Our, our final public hearing item is petition of Josh Lee of Trout Spring to amend the future land use map from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential, and to rezone approximately 5.91 acres located at 1306 Laxton Road from R1 Low Density Residential to R-3C Medium Density Residential Conditional, and for a conditional use permit to allow the development of the property as 50 townhomes. Rachel, you presenting on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
The property located at 1306 Laxton Road, as you said, is designated for Low Density Residential Use on the future land use map. Low Density Residential areas are dominated by single-family detached housing at densities of up to four dwelling units per acre, and may include other public and institutional uses as appropriate. Medium desident, density residential is proposed for this property. These areas are characterized by small lots, single-family detached housing, duplexes, and townhouses at densities up to 12 units per acre. The comprehensive plan also states that where neighborhoods in these areas already exist, infill development should be at a compatible density and housing type. The property is zoned R1 Low Density Residential in accordance with the current FLUM designation. The proposed R3C zoning would allow a conditional use permit to be granted for a townhouse use on the property if approved. The proposed 50-unit townhome development would be accessed from, from Laxton Road in Campbell County. As such, a traffic study was required by the Virginia Department of Transportation. The traffic study was prepared by Hurt and Profit and has received preliminary approval from VDOT. The site is suited for a higher density than is currently allowed by the existing zoning and recommended by the FLUM. As indicated by the traffic study, the surrounding streets can adequately, adequately handle the increased traffic with the additional improvements outlined in your packet. The proposed townhome development is consistent with the townhome use of the neighboring property to the west, and will create a transition from the business areas of Laxton Road to the Low Density Residential component of the Windhurst development to the north. The planning division recommends approval of the petitions.
Great, thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition?
Good afternoon, I'm Andy Kleepack, I'm with Hurt and Profit on Lionhorn Road, here to represent Mr. Josh Lee of Trout Spring. Mr. Lee is also available to answer any questions that he may have regarding the, the actual nature of the townhomes themselves that they have in mind. He's also contacted the, the neighbors, made attempts to contact many of them, and if you would like any elaboration on what he discussed with them, he's also available to answer any of those questions. As usual, the planning department's summary of what we're planning to do and all the issues is very thorough. I don't have a whole lot to add. I would just like to highlight the fact that we went through a fairly rigorous process with VDOT in analyzing the impacts to the, the traffic network out there, a little bit of back and forth with them, and we got their approval of the traffic impact analysis for the development. I'd also like to touch on the buffering of the property. The, the main reason we didn't connect to Enterprise Drive is due to a grade differential. There's a, a pretty significant change in grade from Enterprise up to where the development will sit, which isn't necessarily evident when you're driving down the road, but that, that existing house and the proposed houses, townhomes that we're looking to do sit a fair amount above Enterprise, so accessing it from Enterprise would be really challenging in terms of, of grade. How that also helps the development is it creates both a topographic buffer from drivers, pedestrians walking down the road, and then it also allows a pretty significant area where existing vegetation on that slope, plus the foundation plan is required by code, will buffer that side. On the north side, you've got a pretty significant slope and buffer between the property and the Windhurst single-family development to the north. There's no incentive for the developer to tearing that down, it's on a mature wooded slope, and we would like to retain as much of that as possible. It's a fairly deep buffer, and we'd like to keep it that way. Then on the east side of the development, there's been a bit of discussion in the preceding petition regarding buffering. What we're proposing is the, the city standard evergreen buffer between this property and the neighboring single-family residential development. That, of course, is highlighted on this plan. It also provided a, a profile view from Enterprise Drive up to the site, trying to illustrate how that grade difference in the existing vegetation, a portion of which we have no control of because it's in the right of way, will really screen the view from Enterprise Drive. So I'm happy to answer any questions later on in the process, and as I mentioned, Mr. Lee is also here to, to discuss any questions that may pertain to him.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? If you come forward, please, ma'am, and again, we'll be running the, the clock, but, if you state your name and sign in, we'll be happy to hear from you.
Excuse me, my name is Kimberly Gafford. I'm a city resident, I actually live at 108 Sublet Court, which I would love to be able to point, if I had a little pointer, there you go. I, I am that property that touches this, this proposed project, and I have to say, the letter that I received last week was the first that I had heard of this project. So, when the gentleman that spoke before me spoke that he had spoken to all the neighbors, that is not the case. Because I am one of those neighbors, and I've been living in that home for 18 years. My husband and I are educators, and we purchased, that's our very first house, and it's all we've been able to do ever since. He, we are lifelong educators, I teach at Heritage High School in the city. We bought the city, this house in the city for a variety of reasons. Obviously, it is very close to Campbell County, and we could have lived in Campbell County for much cheaper, but I teach in the city, and I wanted my kids to go to the city schools, and there were a lot of reasons why I felt like this was the right property, and I was willing to pay more in taxes, and willing to not have sidewalks, and all of the other things that the other side of town had. So we bought the split foyer home, 1,700 square feet, on a cul-de-sac, off of a cul-de-sac, off of a cul-de-sac. When we purchased the house, the entire project of Windhurst did not exist, it was fields. It was grassland, and in fact, the property that we're looking at right now was the owner of all of that purchased property, the Windhurst property. It was an older gentleman that had bought that, that owned that property. He had cows on that property when we first purchased it, 18 years ago. And over the course of the last 18 years, we've watched 24502 grow, and a lot of that growth has been very responsible. But my concern is that some of that growth has not been very responsible, and that's, that's why I'm sitting before you. All of the growth that I have observed for the last 18 years in Lynchburg City Schools seems to be occurring on one zip code, one particular side of town, and that is very concerning, seeing that I live on that side of town, I work on that side of town, I travel on that side of town, and, and I, I also have the opportunity to travel on other sides of town, and I don't see nearly the growth that's occurring in those other portions, and, and they have still been able to maintain their character. And we are, and in a position where we are getting ready to lose our character of that particular side of town. And when we purchased that, we were, we understood that this was an area that was incorporated. I've, I've done my Lynchburg history, I'm a history teacher. I know that the area was incorporated, I know that there's a lot of things that we don't get as a result of that incorporation, but I, I am concerned about the amount of growth. So every day I travel from 108 Sublet Court to Heritage High School, it's a two-mile trip. And in that two-mile trip, I pass a number of new residents that have been, been built in the last 18 years. I pass Windhurst, over 1,000 units have been put in the Windhurst property. I pass Cornerstone, another thousand by the time that project is supposed to be done. I pass the Legacy at Linden Park, and I'm, I'm sorry, I only had a week to do this, so, I don't know how many units are there, but it sure is a lot. I pass the Vista's at Dreaming Creek, I pass Timber Ridge Apartments, I pass the Kendall Square Apartments on my way to drop my, my daughter off at Gymnastics right by the Humane Society. I pass 1125, the new development next to the Humane Society on Old Gravesmill Road. I pass Candlewood Court, I, I pass the Gardens at Timberlake, I pass Timberlake, the new property that we just spoke of for the last hour and a half, that's a new rising development property. And I also am, am sometimes fortunate enough to use that wonderful new traffic circle that was right across from Heritage High School, in which I understand is another proposed 160 units that has been already passed. And I also pass the Grand Vista's, and that's an awful lot of growth. It's really changed the character of where I live, and it's, it's, it's useful growth. I'm, I'm an educator, I love to see kids moving in, I love to see kids going to school. But I think when you're looking at changing the character of a community, you have to be responsible. I am, and, and if you could please put the contour map up once, no, no, because I'm, I'm the one he didn't show on that. You'll notice that that property sits up on that hill, I sit down on that hill, and so every, every winter, when the leaves fall off that tree, I sit and look at their garage. And it was something I was willing to purchase because it was in, it was, had this county feel, it was this, this piece of property, and it was a garage, and since then, when the leaves fall off the tree, I see all of Windhurst. And I am looking at possibly seeing 50 more units. And the property in question was a family home. He, he made his money, he, he sold all of that property, with the exception of this one unit, which was going to be maintained as his family home, and he, he unfortunately died, and it's gone through a number of different folks. But I think that it would be very irresponsible for us to, as a community, and I'm not just putting this on you, I really feel like this is a community, that we would change the character of that area. I live on a cul-de-sac, off a cul-de-sac, off a cul-de-sac. There's a basketball hoop in my front yard, I wish I could give you a picture of my house. If you could pull up the parcel viewer, that would be outstanding. I'm at 108 Sublet Court, my son's basketball hoop is in, in the cul-de-sac. You know, it, it is, it would absolutely change. There's concerns already with runoff, and we've seen some, some of the growth and how it's impacted the community in terms of runoff with some of the more recent rains. With the property being at the top of that contour map, that's another concern that we would have. And it, there's a creek bed that runs through that property between the Windhurst. It runs right down the middle of my yard. Not ideal, but it, it, once again, was something I was willing to purchase because I, I felt like I was buying the character of a community. And so I, I'm speaking very strongly, I've talked to my neighbors, I'm slightly disappointed that more of them aren't here, but I, I'm within 200 yards of this property, this is my property, this is my backyard. You know, this is where my son goes out and plays in the woods, and, and this is something that I have significant concern with, as do many of my neighbors who aren't here because a week just isn't enough time to, to make plans for childcare and work and everything else that needs to happen.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else opposed to this develop, to this petition? Come forward, please, and sign in.
My name is David Mann. I live at 206 Windpark Circle, which is also contiguous to the property. As proposed, I am opposed to, to this development. As you can see from this contour view, the, with the exception of the townhouse community across the four lanes of traffic, all the neighborhoods that abut to this are single-family homes. The parks at Windhurst, where my home is on Windpark Circle, that you can see on the north part of this map, all single-family homes, only two access roads, no parts of that neighborhood abut to any type of multifamily dwellings. In general, I'm not opposed to development, and I don't like the attitude not in my backyard. Just feel this proposed development changes the character of the area, which is predominantly single-family, to multifamily. As Kim stated before me, there's really not much buffering, not adequate buffering as proposed on this plan. If we could go back to the other view? That one, perfect. I, I do see where they put in the, the double evergreen vegetation next to the, to the main drive entrance. But the, the wooded area between Windpark Circle and the townhouse community is far from mature trees. They're all deciduous, there's a clear view of the, that full property when all of the, the leaves on the trees have been shed. Perhaps with some more double evergreen buffering, this could be acceptable from that direction. But, as I said before, in general, I'm opposed to this, and it would probably take some significant changes to, to change my opposition to affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed who would like to come forward? All right, and we did have a letter sent into the commission that, that we also have on record. I can't remember the name of the.
That was probably the, that was the day, the days.
What's that?
The days, it was a, it was a Tammy Day, I don't know.
The days, it was a Tammy Day, I don't know where.
Yes, Tammy Day.
It was you, very well written, thank you so much.
Okay, so we do have that on record as well, in your letter too. So we do consider all that in person and in writing, so. All right, at this point, the public hearing's closed. Questions or comments for staff or the petitioner?
I think we covered in the previous presentation, a comment was made about proffers that we cannot request proffers. And so, Mr. Mann, Dave, we cannot request proffers.
I understand that. So what I'm saying is I'm opposed-
Understand. I went out there and looked at that, and I went over there on both Windpark Circle and up down Enterprise Drive and all around. I did not go back into the cul-de-sac, to the cul-de-sac, to the cul-de-sac. My biggest concern is the traffic right there, going down by Brookfield High School, is, there's a concern. I looked over at the, looked over the traffic study, and I said, okay, not a whole bunch of accidents, but thrown in potentially 50-plus more cars, and them leaving in the morning when students are going to school, buses, then coming home in the evening, what is the impact going to be? And that's a concern I have, is the actual traffic on it.
Hurt and Profit did the traffic study. They're more intimately familiar, if you want to call them back up.
Yeah, and I'd like to question the traffic study, because they say there are going to be 19 a.m. trips and 9 p.m. trips, unless I'm reading the map wrong. That sounds awfully low for 50 units.
Would you, would you like to come up and address that, if you would, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to point out that the methodology used is the ITE trip generation method. It's widely accepted by both federal and state DOTs. And we are using the numbers that they've compiled over years of data. And yes, I recognize that there are additional trips being generated as a result of this proposed development. Really, what it amounts to, though, based on the volumes on Laxton Road, those trips are a blip in terms of what's being added to the road network. And yes, during the, during the a.m. exiting trips, there's a total of 18, and then five entering, so a total of 23 trips. And then in the p.m. hour, there's a total of 28 trips to and from the site. And if you dig into the report, you'll see that, based on the total volume on Laxton Road, that is a really small amount. Now, VDOT, when we went through the process of doing the analysis and getting your approval of it, the left turn lane was warranted, which we would provide regardless, because it's a safety item. There is actually no requirement for any kind of right turn lane into the development. We can't provide a full right turn lane, just due to what's out there right now. But in the interest of safety, we are proposing a right taper. So it gives you a little more room to get off of the roadway, out of the travelway, while you're slowing down to make that right-hand turn into the site.
And the left turn lane would be coming from the Enterprise Drive area.
Yes, it'd be coming from-
Entering the property.
Yeah, from the Rainbow Forest area and Enterprise Drive.
I understand that it is a blip. And Dave, we always have the, you know, my question is, when is, you know, who's the last one that gets in? One thing I see here is that if this developer wanted to buy the build, you know, a few hundred feet, or 100 feet to the left there, he'd be in Campbell County, and I don't know what they'd let him do. They might let him put SkyRises there, for all I know. But, but the traffic on Laxton Road would be the same. I mean, if he built across Laxton Road in Campbell County, he could probably build a whole lot denser than we're allowing. And he'd get a whole lot more traffic on Laxton Road. And that's not to say that this needs to go here. But it's not as dense as it could be. And it's, and these are townhouses, that means their owner, well, they don't have to be owner-occupied, but they will be sold, not rented, right?
Correct.
So they might be sold and then rented, but they can, I don't know, that's, I'm just thinking about it. It occurs to me that they wouldn't have to move far to be out of our jurisdiction completely. And the traffic would be a lot, potentially a lot worse, if they did.
We would have to go back to VDOT, of course, if we amended the development to include the Campbell County portion. And we have to, once again, get their blessing on that impact analysis.
I was, but I agree with the planning department's assessment that this is a good transition between the high density and the business use to the lower density of Windhurst. And as you can see right across Enterprise Drive, it's very high density. And this looks like it will look a lot better than that. My concern is, though, my one concern is, I would like to see more of a buffer on the, if that's east or the right side of this plan, between Windhurst and this. Since those are deciduous trees, I'd feel a lot more comfortable if there were a vegetative buffer of evergreen trees, so that looking across there, they don't have to look at these apartments in the winter.
Commissioner, and so likely during site plan, we would ask for supplemental evergreen buffering anyway, because we normally do. But they are also asking for a conditional use permit, so we can impose conditions if you all feel strongly about adding language regarding the evergreen buffer on the Winter's side.
Well, and just sort of wrapping around the bottom right-hand side of that, where there's no buffer shown.
What do you mean, where there's no buffer? Or here?
Well, you see the little green, I assume those are the, an evergreen buffer there, but they stop, and then if you-
Right, so this is, what the neighbors are saying is mostly deciduous. If the planning commission feels that it's important to have the evergreen buffer continue, then we could impose that condition.
I would like that.
I would support that, because I want, looking back over there from the Windhurst side there, looking up on the hill there, I think would help screen better. From the street side, looking up, you know, I think it's a great transition, because you really have to strain your neck to see it up there. Because I was like, of course, I was able to stop, and there were no cars coming, like, look, that's okay, that's neat. Can't see up there. So it is a good transition over. Again, on the Laxton Road, I'm just concerned about that traffic, was that you already had that right turn lane that starts almost up there at the end of the Brookfield Middle School. And it's just, I'm just concerned about the traffic right there.
Left turns will not be easy, having to do that properly.
Exactly, they will not, especially in the morning. I mean, like, I went in mid-morning, and it was fair amount of traffic. I was just lucky, I had a break there on Enterprise Drive, where no one was directly behind me, but I could stop and look.
I do think the people living there are going to feel the impacts more on traffic than the people living around them.
Oh, yeah.
So that's a decision they make buying into it.
Yeah, I mean, that left turn leaving is going to be a real pain in the morning.
That's something that they're buying into that, so.
Rachel, can you bring the slide back that shows the elevation from, that slide exactly? So this is the lady, I think, on Sublet Court.
There is no evidence from my house, they are showing that.
Okay.
Is it similar?
No, I mean, it's, it's a, that's, if a ball, they were playing ball in their yard, and their ball hit, it would land on my back door. Not in my backyard, on the actual concrete.
Is your house lower than Enterprise Drive?
Yes, it's lower.
Yes.
Because you're down by the creek.
So that's my concern with the runoff.
And my question sort of tags on that one. You know, I see lots of erosion control, water control in the fronts on the Enterprise Drive side. I just don't see that much on the backside. And, I mean, the elevation is certainly different, but it's certainly not inconsequential either. So what I'm just, what I'm asking is, what are the, what are the plans for controlling that water on the backside?
Our plan is to treat and manage all runoff on the south side of the property. So in reality, there will be even less runoff going to the north.
So you're telling me you're pitching a lot in such a way that it's going to run towards Enterprise Drive and not into, no, to Jeroback?
Yeah, it will actually significantly reduce the amount going to the north in the gully that she referenced. Mostly because it's impractical and probably infeasible to try to treat runoff on the slope that's there, that wooded slope.
Because it's a pretty good slope. I was amazed at how much slope is coming through there. So, all right, so, so what, so net-net, the answer to this, Gaffer, would be, you're going to see less runoff than you're currently seeing.
Correct.
And give me an idea about, this is a general question that's tied to that, is, there's a lot of, there's a lot of growth on that lot. And I realize that when you start bringing in construction, that a lot of that growth is going to be gone, or it's going to be ruined in that process. But, you know, in my mind, that whole area that's down in the corner of Enterprise and Laxton will stay pretty much wooded, I would assume, or planted, maybe is a better way of saying that.
That's the current plan, yeah.
And then, and then the backside next to, that gets backside of Windhurst, is going to be fairly wooded.
Correct.
And then, and then we're just going to try to maintain whatever we can maintain in the middle.
Exactly.
Okay, so there won't, so to Ms. Gaffer's point, there's not a lot of screen between her house, I mean, currently.
Other than what's-
Between your house, between your house and-
And my works.
Yes, ma'am, and the back of the, and the back of the townhouse.
Correct.
Okay, so, but you're, other than what you're talking about planning here per the site.
Yeah, there's not much in terms of evergreen screening. There's certainly some pretty significant trees in there, but-
There's not a single tree on that property that's not mine.
So Rachel, as part of these, I mean, obviously, any water runoff issues has got to be consistent with the regulations. So, you know, I know this probably sounds Pollyannish, but if the water plan is done correctly, and I know Hurt and Profit's got a pretty good track record as far as their water management situation's concerned, any concerns about water runoff should be able to be handled within the existing regulations and conditions that are out there.
Correct, they would have to manage their stormwater quantity onsite per the regulations.
Consistent with the regulations.
Yeah, you can see on the site plan, they're proposing a stormwater management pot here.
Rachel, can you get the city parcel to come up? It's not coming up online.
You're talking about Ms. Gafford's?
The GIS.
Ms. Gafford's parcel, or just?
No, it just does- The city's, I had to go to Google Maps, which is fine. Looks like it's working for you.
I've got the touch. So where, you just want citywide or-
Go into Laxton, this property, and then switch over to satellite view, or the aerial photos, imagery. Thank you. So if you look at this, the document says this serves as a, created a transition from the business areas of Laxton Road. And Laxton Road has a gas station on it, and the other businesses are really in, their structures are houses. They're the ones that are across the road from the school. It mentions the townhouses across Enterprise Drive, but when you zoom out a little bit, those are a very, very small part of this whole area. And I realize we're starting to cross in the county jurisdiction as well. But to me, this is an R1 area. It's surrounded by houses. There's that few townhouses, which is R2, not R3, across Enterprise Drive. But other than that, I don't see a transition being needed. And I agree with Ms. Gafford, this does change the character of the community. And I feel that we have a service, when people buy into an area, to maintain that character. And I agree that we are changing that in many places. So that's, that's my sticking point with this. The traffic is less of an issue. To me, we are changing an area that's not creating a good transition. And I do agree, when there are needs, when it's necessary for a transitional zone, it's good to do that. But to me, this is, this is an R1 area.
I was going to ask that question. Being relatively new on this commission, I wonder, how often do you actually amend the flume? You know, I mean, when you have the future land use map saying that it's R1, I mean, how often does, does that get amended? And, you know, when do you start going down this slippery slope of changing?
Well, I think it can be amended, and it has been in the past. And I think that when it's proposed, there has to be good reasoning behind it. I tend to agree with Rachel that this is not a piece of property that would be developed for a single family. And I think in terms of the, what you would end up with in terms of impacts, is yes, you would end up with less density, but in the end, you're going to end up with less landscaping and cleared areas also. Because if it was developed a single family, they're going to come in, they're going to braid the entire lot off, all the trees be gone.
No buffer required.
No buffer requirements, and they're going to put as many lots in it as they can get. So, you know, we do think it is serving as a good transition between Laxton and Enterprise. And could you pull up the zone? And turn on conditional use. And turn off the zone.
It's between the two.
Yeah, so what is that CUP right there?
This?
No, the other one.
This? Something I was withdrawing.
So that was the Wood Road, okay.
This is Wood Road right here?
Yeah, so that was, yeah, so, I mean, I think it's a matter of opinion. I think what Rachel's saying is that it would serve as a transition coming off of Laxton into Enterprise.
Tom, the 4, this is 410, I think. Isn't that area proposed to be duplexes? Isn't there an area back there that was-
That is the Wood Road. It was developed, it was proposed for a townhome development. It did not pass city council. I can't, the planning commission may have approved it.
We had one that was on the corner, it said 5, we're like 518.
We get this one back in here, back on Taco Bell.
Yeah, but there's another one, the field, where the finger is, there was something-
That was proposed for townhomes here, and it did not pass.
So go to 410 to the left.
They're developing it as duplexes by right.
Yeah, 36 units, right, instead of 50, is what I read.
And they're also duplexes.
Yeah. No, I'm talking more about the field right there.
Yeah, that was Mr. Jamerson's property.
Right there.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you, keep going over there.
Right there.
So what?
That was a P U D for single family and townhouses at a different Wood Road address.
I think the difference there is, um,
Nothing's been done with it.
Those were accessed off of Wood.
Yeah.
Right, you.
Too narrow.
Yeah, too narrow.
And, and we always support density where it's appropriate, where the infrastructure exists. Um, we like to see, you know, some commercial nearby striving for that walkable goal of the comprehensive plan.
What, what would R2 a- allow? Just less density?
Ten thousand square foot lots.
Yeah, it's just smaller lots, no, townhomes are not permitted now.
Okay.
So, so in that, in that area, in R2, how many single family homes fit in there? Five, six.
The whole, the whole thing's about six.
Six, uh, roughly twenty-four.
And how many did it occur?
R1.
Is that true though? Cause it's four units per acre in R1.
And two point seven.
Four, four, it's a quarter acre.
I mean, in terms of the flume.
Two point, uh, the flume, are we talking about?
Zoning?
Zoning, or are we talking about future lanes?
I guess, I guess, my, my zoning.
Yeah, zoning, yeah.
zoning.
Okay.
Zoning's right around, for R1, is two point seven, two point nine units per acre. And then the, uh, R2 is a few more, about four or so.
Yeah.
And then R3 goes up.
You know, I know what you're saying, Dave, and I'm very sensitive to the, to the character of communities as well. I've got very mixed emotions on both sides of this petition, but I, I will say, and I agree with you to a certain extent about the character of the, of the neighborhood, but this does, the, the access is different than what we were struggling with, with Woods Road, because this is, this is Laxton. You know, I was very much opposed, as I think most of us were, I can't remember if it was unanimous vote or not, against the, the Woods Road situation because the road was so narrow. Uh, but, uh, as Rachel said, you know, the, the, uh, uh, Laxton Road is, is a more substantial road to support it. And Laxton Road's such a mess right now, quite candidly, you know, from a, you know, it's almost like, what's a couple more cars gonna do on Laxton Road?
The problem is, if you hadn't shoved that all into the intersection, I might, I might, I might, I might come along with that. Because normally, when you look at something like this, you sit down and you think, well, gosh, that's not too big a deal. You know, a couple of dozen extra trips a day. Well, the problem is, it's all coming right in that, not only is it coming right in a, a relatively small section of road, it also happens to be, as I think Mark said earlier, people are already trying to get over into that to, to get, so they can set themselves up to get down Enterprise Drive. So, you know, you know, the, the, the fact of the matter is, is you're taking what's a, um, I'm amazed at how low the, I mean, I've read that, that part about the accidents about four times going, I thought I had the wrong road. I didn't see how that was even possible. But, I mean, um, I, I, I was just amazed at how light that was. And, and so as a result, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know how to, I don't know how to think about it, because I would think this would be one of the worst, you know.
Well, I, I would argue that the traffic backed up at the light at Enterprise would block the entrance to this property at some times of the day. And so again,
Mm-hmm.
It's affecting the people that live there more than the people living around it. But getting out, getting out of this property,
Oh, I see your point, yeah.
Making a left-hand turn exiting this property will be impossible many times of the day. But again, people buying into that know that when they get it. So, I'm not as concerned about that, because I don't feel it's gonna have a, it's gonna contribute that negatively to the big picture of traffic. Again, I, I'm still sticking with the change in character.
Yeah.
Which is important, one, Andy, the piece of property in Campbell County is uncommercial, particularly.
That's correct.
So, their intent is, or at least their intent was, for that area to change.
That little piece right on the corner?
That, that piece in Campbell County is uncommercial.
There's still not a lot they can put in there, given how small it is.
Uh, how wide is that?
It's about an acre.
One point two acres.
Yeah, it's quite a bit.
Put a little.
That's a convenience store right there. You better stop and go in there.
I'll tell you, when that, when that changes the character of the area, then I'll go along with it.
I think, I think the only thing that really, to me, changes, is a change in character is along the sublet in those areas. I, I don't think it really impacts the rest. In fact, I think the townhouses across on Enterprise are, are similar, you know? And, you know, when we looked at that Wood Road, uh, development, and I was so, I, I think I was the only one supportive of it. And I feel like this is a lot like that, uh, but more of a direct impact actually on neighbors. Because it actually, that was a, a traffic issue, it wasn't really, oh, it's, there's no buffer. It was really more of a traffic issue.
No, I agree, and that's.
And this is a, this is more of a buffer issue to me than a traffic issue. Although, the, this is gonna, Laxton's gonna keep having, we're gonna keep having these problems and keep having these things come up. And eventually, you know, I, I think it's with, um, Wood Road, now there's development going in there. I think it's a little bit less, but it's not a whole lot less. So the people have the same problem. So the question is, do you pick something, you know, like this? Or do you end up reverting back and it doesn't work out, and someone buys houses and there's no buffer? And, and you can kinda do what you want in the, as long as it's R1, so.
I mean.
I would tend to lean more towards supporting it, simply because there is some buffer. And, and in future use, there might not be that opportunity.
And I'm looking from a standpoint, I understand what you're saying there, I'm looking at, just doing my arithmetic without using a calculator, by right, they could put in roughly sixteen houses there. They can, they can doze that whole top of up, put in sixteen homes.
Yeah.
And that totally, I mean, and we can, no one can say anything about it.
Yeah, I came up with ten.
You did ten, okay.
But anyway.
I was playing with that, but anyway.
It's, I agree with you.
There's several, several houses there.
Yeah.
And then, then they can sit there and doze the entire top of that hill off there, and we can't do anything.
Remove all the trees.
And, you know, there, there would be no barrier, no requirement for trees or anything. And then the other thing, that, whatever goes that fits in there, I'm joking to say, in a stop and go or something like that, we'd know, that can all go in there. And so what comes, which is the lesser of the two evils?
Could they still do that if I own the property to the top of the hill? Could they still bulldoze it though? Cause I own the top, up to the top of it.
And you have some trees on your hill, some hardwoods on your hill, yeah.
I do, but I'm just curious, like, you're just saying that they could bulldoze the whole thing? If I own the hill?
Just to the line.
They, right, but my, my, my property line is right there at the top of the hill.
They could build a retaining wall and.
They could build a retaining.
Hold your hill up, you know, that's what they did on.
But I would still have my hill on my side.
And then to the blue line and across, they could cut all the trees out, totally, with, by right, if it was developed into houses.
If I may, um.
Uh, just, if I could just interrupt.
I understand.
With members of the public, we wanna get everyone's input, but you have to be called upon. So if someone wants to call upon, um, Mr. Mann to come forward, that's fine, but just to follow the protocol.
Mr. Mann, would you like to come forward?
If you could come.
The current designation.
If you could come forward, please do, thank you.
Yeah, you're talking about, um, that you would lose any buffers if the current designation were to remain, and somebody were to develop it into single family homes. I wanna point out that all the homeowners that are here opposing are surrounded by single family homes. We live in single family home neighborhoods. Our neighbors are single family homes, the ones across the street are single family homes. We have single family homes in our backyard, it would not change the character of the neighborhood in any way. To put fifty townhomes in there, whether you can see them or not, there's noise, there's traffic, there's, um, potentially trash. There, it's, it's, it just completely changes the character of the neighborhood. And I, I think the discussion about whether there would be buffers, if it were to remain single family homes, is a moot point. We have, we, we have single family homes all around us, that's all.
And I, so my question, my, see, my, my reasoning behind that is, if, if you want the woods, and you, you, you're sad that you're missing a view, well then, if you had single family homes, you're not gonna have it anyway. Do you see what I'm saying? So, so that's why I'm saying, if you can keep some of the woods, you actually can keep some of the wooded, the, the, the landscape as it looks now. And, and if you had single family homes, you wouldn't. And so if you want, if you like some of the landscape the way it is now, it would make more sense to actually want something like this than single family homes and tear all the landscape out. See what I'm saying? So, that's, that's what I was thinking. And, and you're saying with the conditional, you know, with the condition of having more buffers along that green line could be added in there as a condition?
Kimberly, yes. Would you like to come forward?
Yeah, come on up, please.
I actually have a couple of questions. The green line, I'm pretty sure is a creek, um, which would make it very difficult for the buffers to be in creek bed. And I noticed the decks coming off the back of those units to the right, furthest ones to the right. There is no buffer to those decks whatsoever. And that, because, that's because it's a creek, so they would be an elevated over the hillside. They're, they're not going to be flush on the top of the hill. They would be, they would be elevated over, the, the hill comes this way. So, it comes this way and it comes this way. And it's like a plateau, basically, this little, and so it, it falls down on all sides. Um, so, so that, I think, needs to be taken into account. So we keep talking about buffers, but it's really not. And, and in terms of it being R1, I would find it really hard for a developer to come in and spend the amount of money that it would be necessary to make that property suitable for that many R1, single property homes. And if that were the case, then I, I'm gonna take my chances on that responsible developer. If they're willing to put that much money in grading, um, to make that property work for that many homes, I'll take my chances on that. And, and we bought into an R1, and I, and I just wanna maintain it at an R1. And I also think it's a little response, and a little irresponsible of us to say, well, Laxton Road is already a cluster. It's already a must. It's not your road, it's not our road, we live in the city. That's a Campbell County road, and that's irresponsible of us. My, you know, my, my niece goes to Brookville Middle. It, it's irresponsible, and it's irresponsible of us to say, well, that's their problem. Maybe we should have a joint group when there are properties that are this close to, to a line, so that we're not burdening another county with our problems. I, that's not, it's just not what we teach our children, and I think it would be bad of us to do that, sitting here. And now, can I ask one more question to the developer? How much, I, the blue line that's right above my property, what is the distance to that road?
The distance between the blue?
From, from the top of my property line to that road?
I believe that is about twenty-five feet.
Okay. So, Friday night, I'll be at a football game. I will be rooting for my team, Heritage High School, every single down. First, I want, first and that, first and ten, first and ten. We're talking about one drive, one difference, that there's now gonna be a road that carries fifty people. Uh, and that's assuming that there's only one person and one car that lives in each of those. It just, you know, that, those little trees that are now ten feet apart isn't gonna cut it.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Rachel, again, just to make certain, it's ten feet apart for the trees, but with bushes between the trees, is that correct?
That's correct, and planting trees closer than ten feet together is, I mean, that's an ill fate for the trees.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, it's about as close as you can get.
And I'd like to clarify, the, the, the creek, I believe, is the green line on this side. I'm talking about the green line at the, along the top, closest to the units. I don't see any deck, so that's why I'm, I'm, the yellow line doesn't indicate a deck, I don't think. That's a property line, not a, not a deck.
Could you send it to that? That is not a, the green line is not a creek, that's a buffer.
Right.
This is the existing.
The creek's over by the second green line to the right.
The, the narrative says about landscaping and buffers, it says, to the north, existing woods will remain. To provide, to the east, existing woods and a proposed buffer will be provided to screen, provide screening from adjoining residences.
Right, so the creek is actually at the bottom of the hill. So, I was talking about the top of the hill, is what I was talking about. The contour lines go up. So I was looking at that top green line.
But then, those are all gonna be on the side, that's not the top of the. That whole section, I have a picture on my phone, that would help anyone.
Well, the contour lines are ten-foot, like, elevation, right? Isn't that a, yeah?
One of those ten-footed?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a thirty, almost a thirty-foot difference.
Forty, forty feet, R and three.
Could I, then we wanna see it, that property, I took a picture this morning, if that helps.
That, so there's green, okay. That green just indicates where the trees are now.
Cause where the trees are now, this is the proposed buffer. If you want to extend the buffer, then that, this lower green line would come on up.
So, Rachel, can you clarify, if, so if we decide, if, if the developer didn't wanna put in the trees, could they also put in a wall? Are there, are there those options, like either or?
Um, you're asking if a fence could be?
Yeah, like a fence, yeah, is that, are those, are there two options? Or is it?
I give you my opinion. The, that buffer's not required, so you can condition whatever you think is appropriate. I would think that in terms of maintenance and longevity, the trees would be a better solution.
Right, mm-hmm.
Yeah, that, that came up in the last discussion.
Yeah. Cause I trid- the, the, if you put up a fence at six feet, and trees would be.
Well, honestly, yeah.
And in fairness to the owner here, this, this is higher. So this would help on the Windhurst side. I think what she is saying is that this is fairly on grade across from her residence. So if you go look at the aerial.
That would look like about twenty, I mean, by those contour lines, it looks like about twenty feet. It's kind of a gentle slope, when you look from the road on Google.
So this, I believe this is that residence. So she has a tree line to here, and then the buffer would be there. I mean, so, I mean, let's just talk about, so there's a lot of things going on here. There's density, there's traffic, there's tree clearing. It's conditional use permitted. If, if you think there needs to be additional buffers, um, you could condition additional buffers. If you think there's too many units, you could, uh, reduce the number of units. Now, obviously, the developer's not gonna like that, and that might not make the project work for them. But those are all things that you can consider, alright? Or you could just, not three.
I would like to condition additional buffers on the east side, the south side.
So that would look something like, um.
And remember, this perspective, I think everyone realizes, but we flipped it, north is facing to the right.
Oh, yeah.
It's opposite of what you're talking.
To the right and to the.
It's op- it's not what we normally see in the north. It's a plat map, so they turned it to the right.
Yep, so the condition would be something like the evergreen buffer
South on the northward.
Will be extended along the northwestern property line, adjacent to the existing vegetation, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. So that, they're, and they're gonna leave as, all of those trees in that, within that little green area, and then they're gonna put some more.
I, I, I would actually like to see more along the Gaffords. In that corner, I would like to see more, if that was possible.
Yeah, that's, that would include that.
So that's the east.
It would wrap all the way around up toward Enterprise.
So the other thing I guess to point out is, this is, this one oh eight?
Mm-hmm.
So that's your residence, right?
Yes, ma'am, very certainly.
I am pretty, okay, so, that, that existing tree line comes to here, so it's really this corner of her property. So it does look like they could put a few more trees right in there, um, to deep that up a little bit.
What about in between the existing and the road, there's a white area that's open? Down in the corner, no, right where you were, but in the corner, right in there.
Yeah, they, I mean.
I mean, there's more that could be done in there, do you think?
I would think, yeah. I mean, they were just showing what.
Right, this is. Right, this is not...
Typical buffer.
Right.
That would all be addressed in the, say, plan.
The gafford, what is it, is it about twenty feet from the back of your home, or thirty feet from the back of your home to the end of your property line?
Sir, I have a picture of that one, that I took this morning, as I was backing down in my driveway. And you can see the garage up at the top of that property, the tree, that would be where the road would be. So it, it's an incline this way and it's this way.
Yeah, I think we see the, but, yeah. Is the garage, is it that gray building that you can see?
No, it's Campbell County, actually, my husband's a principal, so just tell him it's closed.
Probably this.
Yeah, you can't see it with the leaves, but there's a gray building in the, kind of a gray outline.
Right there to the right of the microphone, uh, it's right above your head.
But that's, I don't know that we can pull that together.
It's, yeah, it's, if it's not going to, that's fine, we can just pass it down the line, Rachel, it's not.
Okay.
We will look at all you need, ma'am.
That's my property, the corner, and that's...
Thank you.
Uh, it's probably also, yeah, it's probably also worth noting that the site is going to be graded. I mean, the house looks like it's sitting on sort of this hilltop right now. Um, and given the stormwater management pond that's going to be down here, this is going to flatten out, so I don't know if it's going to be quite as dramatic as what we're thinking.
I think based on what we heard earlier, it's going to be, the, the, I don't know what the right word is, we're going to say it's going to be shaved. Then we're going to, it's going to be shaved so that the water runs off down and, you know, down towards Laxton Road into that wastewater situation. So, what that says to me, and perhaps I'm wrong, is that, um, given, given the, the buffer and things that are already there, there's going to be essentially water remediation throughout the lot, to, to, to handle water, you know, period. If you've handled the buffer based on what y'all have just talked about, then, um, the, 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 the big victim, the big, um, you know, what you're going to lose, I guess, is going to be, is going to be the view. And that, and I, and I think that, you know, that's going to be an issue, that and the traffic, and I think that's, that's, that's what you're fighting on. I think, in my opinion, you know, the, the idea of townhouses versus apartments, I think, I think makes sense. The problem that you run into, and, and I think that, that along with the remediation that I just talked about, and with the, with the buffering, it's going to leave, um, you know, a great, good faith situation on the part of the developers. I'm, I'm still struggling with the, I'm still struggling with the traffic. You know, that and the view, those are the two things, the traffic and the view end up being, um, are going to be, are going to be casualties.
Yes, ma'am, you can come forward, and since you haven't been up here, state your name and sign in, please.
Tammy Day, Thomas, and myself did send a letter, um, to, to all the members. So traffic definitely is a big concern, we did mention, you know, crime just increased with increased volume, two schools in the area. A gentleman over here mentioned reduced number of units. This is a whole lot of townhomes in a pretty small area, um, so if you would even consider that, you know, instead of fifty, thirty, which is roughly what's across the street in this long, narrow, um, group of townhomes. So I just wanted to put a plus in for reducing the number. If it's not going to be left, if the zoning won't be left alone as an R1, maybe that's something to consider as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sign in two, please, while you're up, thank you.
We own a townhome at 1,002 Enterprise Drive, kind of right across the street. I, I would echo as well about the, the community. We were very attractive to that area when purchasing our townhome back in June of this year. So, less might be better, um, if we are not going to consider going back to a single-family home, um, at least less, and that would maintain some of the natural area in that area as well. I think, um, some of the trees, um, undisturbed. Thank you.
So just so you know, Campbell County was, uh, the only response that we got with any type of, uh, issue was that they wanted to be able to review the portion of the road that was in Campbell County. Obviously, they went through a very stringent review with BDOT, which is actually what has delayed this project until today, uh, because they were going through that process. So, in terms of traffic from concerns in Campbell County, uh, we have not received any from the county itself. So you're, I think you're kind of left with density and viewshed protection, um, which, through the buffers, you can probably address that. Again, the density is very difficult because you have the price of the land versus development yield. And that's something I, I can't address. In terms of future land use, if you do choose to amend the future land use map, uh, to a medium density, what R medium density says, so if you're saying this is okay for townhomes, you would amend it to medium density. That's twelve units an acre per your comprehensive, per the city's comprehensive plan, that's seventy-two units, right? They're proposing fifty, so you have to consider all of those things.
Do we have to amend the future land use plan if we, uh...
Well, we have two actions.
You don't have to, but it would make sense if you're going to approve townhomes for it, you would want the future land use category to match.
But it wouldn't mean that they could then suddenly build seventy-six units.
No, because you're going to be, you would be resented in setting the conditional use permit with the project.
And we're not proposing amending the zoning, it's a future land use map, which...
No, you're, you're proposing three things.
Well, that's true.
Future land use map to say, yes, you know, uh, the, the increased density up to, up to seventy-two units, and town, single-family duplexes of townhomes would be appropriate in this area.
Right.
That's one question. And when, if you get beyond that, it's, uh, the proposal is townhomes, or if you allow the town, townhomes, it has to be at least zoned R3. And in R3 districts, you have to have a conditional use permit.
It, it sounds like we've got two things on the table to address that. One is improving the buffer, or improving the, uh, the trees, and then, and it sounds like people are in favor of that. Playing around with the number of homes, or the number of units allowed, um, I mean, we could haggle with that number. I don't know how to resolve that, that would make both parties happy.
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, I feel completely inadequate to say, all right, instead of fifty, we're going to say thirty. You know, I, and of course, I remember when we went through the situation with the development on Rivermont Avenue of, of, of the old Villa Maria School, the developer said, oh, I can't do it for anything less than X units. And then to get the process through city council, all of a sudden, it became, well, I did squeeze out, I think it was two less units out of the, out of the, uh, out of the figure. You know, in spite of the fact that, that we were assured by the developer that she could absolutely not do it for less than the X number that she presented, but then somehow she made it work less. But, I mean, obviously, I, I mean, I don't have any basis to say we're going to go from fifty to pick some number out of the air.
I think if we're not comfortable with the number, then we would recommend not approving it and let that number be worked out outside of this room. If you're comfortable with the number, then that's what you would go with.
And we just leave it as is, no?
They can still build and do whatever. But the houses, what, ten houses, ten, twelve houses up there?
So I think the place for you to start is, is it appropriate to amend the future land use map from low-density residential to a medium-density residential? If you can't get beyond that...
That's a good question.
There's no other discussions to have.
I think it is appropriate because of what's across the street and what is, uh, right beside it in Campbell County, right across that line, on the same side of the road. I think it, it is a transition, so I do think that's appropriate. And I'll tell you what I think about the number when you want to know.
But, and again, I'm sorry if I can't keep up with the numbers, Tom, you've been very patient with us this evening, I appreciate that. But if we did break this into small bites, and, because this is a, you know, there's three parts to this petition, but if we did break it into small bites and voted first on changing the, the flume from low-density residential to medium-density residential, at, at that point, when it becomes medium-density residential, what does that kick up the potential number of townhouses to?
That's saying, in, in theory, it could be up to twelve units per acre.
Yeah, so I would just say, if we're going to do that, then you're, we better watch out how we handle the rest of the, of the petition, because, uh, if we, if we don't feel comfortable with the fifty, uh, you, you better not vote to, to do it at medium-density resolution, because if you, if you don't tie it down to at least a fifty, then they can kick it up to a higher figure.
Well, they'd have to go back through the conditional use permit process. And it's up to, up to twelve units per acre.
I, I would almost argue in this case, it makes more sense to do everything together.
Well, it still has to be three separate motions.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind doing that one last.
What, the flag?
Yeah.
That doesn't make...
Doesn't make sense.
Sounds not...
We've done that before.
We nailed it.
I'm sorry, I must screw that up.
That's fine, that's fine.
Maybe impossible.
You, think about it like this, so, low-density residential for future land use category, all that allows a single-family homes, up to four units per acre. That's, that's all it's good for, so that's all you can develop it for, right? So you've got someone coming in saying, because of the, this area is adjacent to Windhurst, there's townhomes across the street, there's, uh, you know, the property that's zoned in the county is commercial, and, you know, because of that area, and because of, whether you agree with it or not, what's being said is, transition to these areas, a medium-density residential would be more appropriate. If, if you, if you agree with that, then you're saying, okay, up to townhomes would be okay here, up to twelve units per acre. The zoning hadn't changed yet, all right? It's still zoned R1. So then you start considering things like, okay, is fifty units okay, is seventy-two units okay, is forty units okay? What is the right density for there? And, and then if you get beyond that, you know, then you're kind of, if you, if you choose to rezone it to R3 for the townhomes, you're kind of saying, okay, then because we're saying it's okay for townhomes, what are the things that need to be done to address the impacts from it, like the evergreen buff?
Yep. Well, we can proceed with those three parts, those three motions, unless people have more questions or things to discuss. And if not, I'll read the first one, and then someone can, um, propose a motion. So the first one is to amend the future land use map from low-density residential to medium, as, medium-density residential at thirteen oh six Laxton Road. We have a motion?
I'll move that.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Nay? How many were nay?
Nay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
It was four nays.
Well, I'll go with it.
So now everybody's changing their vote to nay.
All right, um, we really need to know about voting.
I know, I know.
How many were opposed to that? One, two, three, four?
Yep.
So it's four, three?
Yeah.
Then if, if you're not...
And I'm sorry, we got a, like a thing that I can actually write this down on. So who voted yes on the flume amendment? All right, so Marion, I'm sorry, my pen is not working. Marion, Rogers.
Light.
Light. And who's, who was the fourth?
Oh, you never mentioned that.
You asked for, in favor.
Those, those are ayes.
Right, was it, wasn't it four?
It was three, four.
Three, four.
It was three, four, yeah.
So if, if you're not, if you're not in favor of amending the future land use map, then the other two, I'll be paralel sample for it.
All right, so I'll read the second one. Uh, rezone the property located at thirteen oh six Laxton Road from R1, low-density residential to R dash three C, medium-density residential, conditional, subject to the following condition, um, developing in substantial compliance with the concept plan entitled Rezoning Concept Plan, Laxton Ridge Townhouse Development.
When do we mention additional buffers in that?
That's, that would be in the third one.
Okay, I want to make sure.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
For the rezoning.
For that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Nay.
Nay?
Then you don't need to vote on the seat, because you can't do it.
Right.
We just, uh...
But for the record, there were concerns, if it had proceeded forward, about improving the buffer.
Right.
Okay, so, so we are recommending denial to city council, and a reminder, we are simply making the recommendation, so they will make the official decision, and so we encourage everyone to participate in that meeting when it happens. So thank you very much for coming tonight. That's our last official item. Notice that we are not meeting again until December because of Thanksgiving, and I also want to point out, in case you didn't hear, council approved the downtown plan last night, so that's a big step forward.
And Tom is still there, they haven't listed him yet.
Yep.
He looks really happy, too, look at him.
Do we have a meeting adjourned, uh, motion adjourned, second, all in favor?